Good evening. At 7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Ken, would you take the roll, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Steeler?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
And we have one absent.
Yes. Very good. We're asking if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Jordan Lehman. She has been an intern for the planning department for the summer, a recent University of Minnesota graduate, and she will be presenting one of the agenda items this evening. So, Jordan, welcome to the Planning Commission. We look forward to your input. And just so you know, don't get used to her, she's done Friday, so...
You're welcome, and we wish you well.
Glad to have you here.
With that, the Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or with changes?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. I wished, had wished to remove items 3, 5B, and 5C from the agenda, however, I vowed the will of the group.
You can pull them under the consent agenda vote.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or if someone would like the item removed, so be it?
Mr. Chair, I would like to approve the consent agenda, removing for separate considerations item 5B and 5C.
I have a motion with a... to pull items 5B and C. So, we would have the consent agenda would be just item A, to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 12, 2024. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. All right. Item 5B, Susan, you ask that to be pulled?
Yeah. Staff on the Autumn Hills Apartments, they're asking for the variance to have a shorter than usual parking length. They want to go 18 feet instead of 20. And the comment in the staff report was that cars and vehicles and trucks could overhang the sidewalk so that the driving lane was clear. I don't think that's a good precedent or a good standard for us to set. One of the joys of having kids is that you get to experience other places. And I've just spent a week dodging vehicles that overhang the sidewalk. I think that if that is something that is a problem, and the city does not require a sidewalk in that area, then we would better off, be better off not requiring the sidewalk. And instead, saying, "No, you don't need a sidewalk there," and we will have our code required 20-foot-long parking spaces. I'm concerned with the precedent that we're setting, and the... and it comes up on Shadow Creek also. So, I was, I just... if you could help me understand that, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, the proposal for this case, I'm having problems getting the image up, is to replace the parking with the same side... they're not changing the sidewalk, other than the handicap facilities going in for the pedestrians for, to the new sidewalks, to the building. Yes, big vehicles come back over a sidewalk and potentially block it. I didn't see a value in making them enlarge the parking lot when they have garages to the south, sidewalk to the north, that I didn't even think there was room that they could change the layout, when it's really a repair and replace in place. So, it's somewhat, I would say, challenging to get it bigger unless we want them to tear out the sidewalk and move it back three feet or two feet, and then replace the sidewalk, and they were not proposing that.
I understand the challenges with the site, but I also understand that once we have allowed this and have stated it and say, "Yes, and it's not a problem in the future," these things have a tendency to grow over time.
And there's the image Abby found it.
Yep. Thank you, Abby.
So, the existing spots are 18 feet long, and the proposed spots are, again, 18 feet long. And with the garages to the south, there's... now, the drive aisle might be 24 or 25 feet, so maybe there'll be a little longer room there, but the existing sidewalk is not being proposed to be changed along the north side.
How many feet? You need 24 feet in the drive aisle, right?
Yes.
And right now, you got 26 plus?
Yeah, down, and it might be about 25 by the garages as you move east. So, they could stripe them to 19 feet. Well, there's 24, 3, 9, or stripe them to 19 feet, but there's still be, going to be vehicles backing up to the sidewalk. It doesn't change that.
I am just concerned that that not become the standard for the city.
I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Young. It is a legal nonconformity that state law and our code would allow them to maintain. But I hear you saying that you want to state, at least for the record, that 9 by 18 should not be the standard that we're using or that we rely upon in the future.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you.
Any other comments on item 5B?
I do.
Kevin?
Abby, I hear you say it's a legal nonconformity, but they are proposing to redo it. And since they're proposing to redo it, we can instill or change what we are doing there, right? We could ask them to make it bigger if we wanted to.
I believe we can ask them. I'm not sure about the legal requirement, because our code does say that they can maintain it, including replace it. And so, I'd have to check our code section specifically, but I'm fairly certain our code allows them to maintain, repair, replace in exact without us obligating them to come into conformance. We could ask them.
Okay, because you can see on every car parked here on the images we have, they are well over the sidewalk, most of them.
Other comments? Hearing none. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the site plan review, item 5B, Autumn Hills Apartment. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, there is a resolution in the packet for that item. Ninety... 2401.
So, do we need two motions, one to approve this, or no?
No.
Approve the resolution.
It's approving the resolution.
All right.
And that has all the conditions of approval.
Thank you for educating me.
Happy to help.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve 5B, the site plan review for Autumn Hill Apartments, Campbell Properties, 706 12th Street, Southwest, resolution number 09-11-24-01. I'll motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
We have two noes. Motion carries, 4/2 vote. If I heard this end correct, it was all yays? Okay. All right. Item 5C, Shadow Creek Estates, 61502, 202nd Street North, final plat, PUD, final plan, site plan review. Susan, you ask this one to also be pulled?
I've got several questions and a concern.
What can I help you with, Susan?
Well, the concern is that if there had been, if we had had concerns about the final plan and the PUD, they've already started their work. And I realize the City Council made the decision to grant them that. But again, I'm concerned about if this is going to be the way we're going to be doing business in the future. That's a concern.
Can I try outside first?
Yes, please.
They requested and were granted a grading permit, with the understanding there was no guarantee of approval of any of this next phase that we're in now. They're just prepping the site, no utility work, no street work, till all these approvals go through. They're just grading, and they did some tree removal. It's not our goal to do this separately, because there's more reports, more approvals, more documentation. It's our goal to have this all, ideally, be all wrapped up in one set of approvals. Everything's approved, then they start the grading and the site work. With the winter, with winter coming, they asked and received, or granted a grading permit to get started earlier. That's why we are, we are at where we are at right now.
Again, I'm just concerned about how we move forward. In the report, I understand that it is a nonconforming first. Is the entire property part of our final PUD? Or is the horse stable area excerpted from the final PUD?
No, that... Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, the horse facility, horse tables, and the northeast corner are in the PUD.
Wait one second, Susan, please. But the property to the west is not?
Correct. That's a separate parcel.
The second parcel.
And that's no approvals, no nothing for that.
Okay, so we're only on the right side?
Correct.
Thank you.
One of the things that historically, as a planning commission, we have tried to do is when folks were doing PUDs or when folks were doing variances, we were trying to make things better. If there was a variance and they had significant impermeable area, we tried to make sure that there was no or very, very minimal impermeable area in return for the variance or on a PUD that there is significant public use. I am very concerned about the degrazable area, because, yes, there have been horses grazing all the way to the property lines of those homes to the north in the past. And it is their long-term plan to not be able to have the property to the west be used for manure management, as they do now. And the Washington County rules are pretty clear. You need two grazable acres per animal unit, for horses and animal unit. If we go forward and approve this, my concern is that we are setting ourselves up in the future for a significant problem. As an aside, I think that when they do significant grading, they need silt fences, and they're doing significant grading on the arena, and there are no silt fences. So, if... that concerns me, that if we are doing this as a final PUD, we're going to be setting ourselves up for a real challenge in the future with respect to the number of horses, and we essentially turn this into a feedlot. And that's... let me go, let me go there first, and your thoughts on that, please?
A couple of things. The final PUD and final plat are very consistent with the preliminaries that were approved last year. And so, they have brought forth in all their final plans, including the building plans, consistent with what was approved a year ago by the City Council.
And I brought my concern forward then, too.
And that hasn't changed. As far as the grading and the number of horses, the applicants here, Mr. Christensen, it might be better to pose those questions to him. But I understand your concern about grazable acres and number of animal units and those kind of things. I don't have a great answer, but maybe Todd can speak to that.
Then for staff, could we, on the 25-foot setbacks?
Yes.
Those are setbacks from the curb. Is this... are the buildings that we're approving tonight, is there, are sidewalks planned in that subdivision?
Yes, I believe just the north side of the new street.
Okay. How wide are the sidewalks and the... and do the sidewalks abut the curb?
There's about a one- or two-foot upper, or...
Boulevard.
Boulevard, thank you. And then it's a six-foot wide sidewalk.
Okay. Then I'm getting back to the length of parking.
Right.
It becomes an issue, because there's no way that you can park, pick 'em up trucks so that you have sufficient space to pass in front of the truck to get into your house or garage and not overhang the sidewalks. And just so I throw them all out there...
Can I jump in?
Certainly. I'm sorry.
I'm reviewing the plan. The sidewalk is in the right-of-way, and then from the, and so then there's a one-foot... I was, I need to be correct. I think the sidewalk is almost right against the curb on the north side. And then, there's about a one-foot boulevard between the edge of the sidewalk and the property line. And then from the property line to the front of the building is, I believe, 20 feet. So, they, unless you have a boat, a trailer, or a long pickup, there should be enough room between the front of the structure and the sidewalk to not overhang any of the sidewalk.
What I'm reading here is that the requested deviation is 20 feet to back of curb or sidewalk edge, so...
There will be sidewalk edge on that side.
All right. Thank you. That's...
The back of curb, it depends on the south side.
Thank you. That's...
Where there's no sidewalk.
That's really helpful. There are some numbers in here that don't add up. On the landscaping?
Yes.
On the landscaping, there are 91 overstory trees in your, in your materials, not 98 as stated. And you've got 18 understory trees, not 15 as stated. So, the numbers, there's just an incorrection in the numbers. It does say in here that you're asking for a new landscape plan.
Correct.
If we approve the finals this evening, how will the city enforce a revised requirements for landscaping, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, that's one of the conditions. It's 18H, I think, is the, I'm looking at my report. And part of the reason for the changes also is some of where they were proposing trees would be over underground utilities, so they have to be moved. And then we will be working closely with the applicant and their landscape architect to fit in as many trees as possible. It even appears on the north side, on the north side of the ditch that's on the north side of, or swale that's on the north side of the north buildings, up along the north property line, there's room there for tree planting. So, before we say go, they will have a landscape plan that meets engineering requirements and meets planning requirements for tree count and tree location.
And I seem to remember that when we, my final question is, I seem to remember when we were first talking about this plat, the commission was concerned about parking in this area, and that if folks have company or they're in one of their homes and they have a teenager or two, where would cars park? And I thought that, and again, I'm old and I forget, but I thought that we had requested that there be some areas where party parking or visitor parking would be, because this is a very tight area.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, you're absolutely right. It is very tight. The only spots that we could identify that are possible for parking are along the east side of the north-south street at the west end. Otherwise, there's driveways everywhere. There's no place for any on-street parking. And that will, I think, have to be their own, their own reality, and the HOA will have to maybe get involved if there begins a problem, and which means the city will get the phone calls also. But they're, short of having them remove a couple of units and put in a overflow parking lot, there is really no spot to add parking, except on that east end, or west end, east side of the driveway or road.
Okay. Then I fully, fully, fully agree and support the request by Public Works not to plow this area.
Yes. They, they are, they don't want it.
It will be a nightmare. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, if there are any other questions, the applicant is here, if need be.
I do have a couple of questions. Susan hit a couple of them, so it's no big deal. But there, for the longest time, where I would say they're kind of separating Block 1 from the horse farm, there was a trail that we discussed ad nauseum.
Yes.
And now it has disappeared.
If I may, they are, it's on the plans. They are building a trail. It'll come up, starting, you know...
But it looks like that so-called trail...
It'll start about here, where my mouse is. Okay, and then go across.
Let's see his mouse.
And then up the...
How about, is there any chance you can go to page 48 of the report?
Well, I was having problems with that.
I can, if you need.
All right. It's on the very first sheet of the plan set, and it's on some of the other plan sheets. And it will go up to the park on the north side of the plat, the north, see, the northwest corner of the plat site. There it goes.
Thank you.
Yes, and then there was...
Is it one of the conditions?
As we went past down by the wetland there, or the storm, right there, it was supposed to go to the east here, all the way through, somewhere right along here, forever. There was a trail there.
If I may, the change is now it's going to become a sidewalk along the south side of the west townhomes, and then a sidewalk along the north side of the new street, out to Goodview that way. Because of the wetland and trying to go through wetland, that was not really feasible. So, the alternative was to have the sidewalk alternative along the new street.
And my only other, well, I have two, actually. Now, all of a sudden, we appear with a seven-foot fence. I don't recall a fence ever discussed anywhere on this site.
There wasn't initially, but that was a suggestion, I don't know if the developers suggested or staff did, to provide more screening to the homes to the north. There's four backyards there on the east end, especially to provide privacy and separation.
And what's wrong with a six-foot fence for privacy?
I don't have, well, it's just one foot of height, that's all. But I didn't have any major heartburn of seven, but if you think that's too tall, and six is fine.
Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
On this property, I don't know if you've been there today or this week, they are right on the backs of some of the sheds and appurtenances of those homes. And I would be supportive of seven feet, especially since this is going to be a radical enough change for the folks that are living to the north there.
If you're good with it, Susan, I would have expected you to say no to that.
Well, I'm just looking at...
Yep, that's good.
Because, yes, I did stop there today.
And really, all my questions, but as we know, whenever we build and we're near nature and it smells like nature, no one's ever happy. They're stunned that they drove by a house farm here to buy something, and now there's going to be horses there.
Well, they'd be fun to look at.
I have no problem with the horses being there. My question is, how do the residents, you know, how do we make sure they know that they've bought a place that is adjacent to a horse farm?
You don't.
I don't know of a way to enforce that or make it a legal requirement.
I mean, you're the guys that have to deal with it. We just sit up here. Kevin, go ahead. I'm sorry, Abby?
I just will state for the record, the property will have an HOA. And so, I think it would be my hope that the builder that the developer has teamed up with would be educating the new residents of the conditions around them. But sometimes that, that can help at the onset of some of that early education. But I do hear what you're saying. We do have that in all of our fringe neighborhoods.
Yes. We also have the airport near this site also.
Which we get plenty of complaints.
Kevin?
Just curious why we don't have the trail, the sidewalks, and this fence as part of the conditions?
They are shown in the plan set, and we're approving the plans as a whole.
So, you have conditions that approve those plans specifically?
Plans as presented.
What number is that? I'm looking, sorry. It says we're approving the plans. I know we do, but...
Let me find it.
Number one.
Typically, it's our first condition of most of our resolutions.
To the final plans, okay.
Yep, number two in the second part.
Any other questions regarding Shadow Creek Estates? Hearing none. The Chair is looking for a motion to approve or deny Shadow Creek Estates at 6150 202nd Street North for their final plat, PUD, final plat, site plan review. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, there's two motions, there's two actions.
You are correct.
You could do them all at once, but there's really two separate motions.
I'll be hoping for two motions. You know, you shouldn't give us two months. They're almost three months off.
You know, we're all out of practice.
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion for the final plat first.
I think Kevin had it.
If we have a motion and a second, can the applicant then answer questions from us?
Or we can have the applicant ask questions now?
No, bring them forward.
You have questions? Good evening, gentlemen. I have, just for the record, the name, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Todd Christensen, 6150 202nd Street, Forest Lake.
Susan?
Could you please help me understand how you're going to be dealing with the questions regarding horse management that I posed to you?
What question exactly are you posing?
One, the county requirements for two acres per animal unit. And second, manure management, especially as you develop the area to the west.
Well, the, I believe we have a conditional use permit for the farm. I don't know.
I don't believe so.
But, I mean, we've historically been there. You know, we have, we have a full staff of people there that take care of the horses and the stalls, the paddocks. You know, we have boarded horses there. They all have paddocks. They all have plenty of room. So, it's really a professional business. It's not just a stockyard.
I understand that you have really great staff. You, Shadow Creek has a, has a long, excellent reputation.
We had, we had 40 kids come through, elementary kids, junior high kids come through there on summer camps this year. So, I'd really, you know, as far as the manure goes, that's an evolving thing that we've been working on. Right now, we're spreading it on the west side. Eventually, we'll just be storing it and hauling it over to Dan Taylor's farm. So, probably, once every other week, we'll probably haul it over to Dan's. So probably, once every other week, we'll probably haul it over to Dan's. So that's kind of where we've been going with that.
It is going to be an issue. And that the comment regarding a very large number of dwelling units to the immediate north is, is going to be a comment. And yes, you can, as you are drylot, most of those horses now with, you know, there are some very limited grazing, but-
We have plenty of grazing, it's not limited. We have plenty of grazing for the horses we have. There's been a lot more horses there than there are now. So there's plenty of grazing, that is not an issue. We have three different veterinarians, we have everything from horse massagers to trainers to everything else. There's, it's not two horses in the backyard of your house.
I understand that, sir.
It's a business.
So, so you're, you, you have the, the two acres per, per animal unit?
I really don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair is looking for a motion for the final plat for Shadow Creek Estates, six-one-five-zero two hundred Second Street North. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, Kevin? I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval of the proposed final plat for Shadow Creek with the seven conditions?
Yes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain, sir.
Motion carries, five with one abstention. Give me a second. Okay. I'm looking for a, a motion for the final, PUD final plan, site plan review for Shadow Creek Estates at six-one-five-zero two hundred Second Street North. Kevin?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend final PUD, including site and design plans at the city council, with the following twenty-four conditions and seven attachments.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain, sir.
Motion carries, five with one abstention. Good luck with your project.
Yes, thank you.
Item six A is a public hearing, variance for a septic system for John Goze, seven-four-five-one, one hundred and ninetieth Street North, resolution number zero-nine dash one-one dash two-four dash zero-two. The way this will work this evening is that the city staff will present the application as they understand it, and the planning commission members will ask any clarification questions that they may have. We will then ask if the applicant would like to add anything to the conversation, and after that, we will host a public hearing. I'll give a few more details during the public hearing, right before the public hearing. We will close the public hearing. At that point, it'll come back to the planning commission for a final decision. On variances, we are the final decision. There is one exception, if someone is not pleased with the decision, they can appeal it to the city council. There is a fee, I believe it's a couple hundred dollars, and you have seven business, seven calendar days to file the appeal. So with that being said, I, I, I believe, Jordan, you're presenting?
Yep.
It's all yours.
All right, so the applicants, Tatiana and John Goze, the owners of seven-four-five-one, one hundred and ninetieth Street, are seeking to replace their current septic system because it's failing. Their current system is right here in yellow. It was agreed upon, purchase that the seller would construct this new septic system, and they employed Ben Zirk of Zirk Soil Testing, who was tasked with designing this new system. He proposed that the new system be located in the northeast corner of the property, which is up here in red. But during the permit plan review process, the property owners were notified by Washington County that there was a unmapped wetland that was identified in the northeast, which is this green dotted line up here. This wetland is forty-four feet from the proposed site, which presents a problem for the applicant because the required setback for a septic system from the wetland is seventy-five feet. The property owners are requesting a variance of thirty-one feet from the unmapped wetland to the east, and Zirk says that there's only two suitable locations on the property for a septic system. One is where the proposed northeast location is in red, which is preferred as it consists of native soils with better drainage and ability for wastewater treatment. The other is where the current system is, in yellow, over here. But this is not preferred as it consists of clay soils, which is deemed less suitable for a septic system and require more soil correction and grading. So staff reviewed this variance application and found that the construction of the septic system is a reasonable use of the property, and the need for the variance arose from circumstances unique to the property and was not created by the landowner, as they did not create the shape of the lot. And they did not know about the location of the unmapped, or they did not know about the unmapped wetland prior to purchase of the property. And staff believes that this variance will not have negative impacts on the public welfare on neighboring properties or the wetland, as the new system should provide better protection of the area, as a, better protection for the area and groundwater, as it will be compliant with current standards. So staff recommends approval of the requested variance by adoption of the resolution number nine-eleven-four-two. And just to note, this resolution was revised to add the three conditions of approval.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part, that it was revised?
This resolution was revised to add the three conditions of approval.
So the handout you have is the updated one, the one in the packet that went out, we forgot to put in those three conditions.
Thank you. Questions of our peril, Jordan?
I have a-
Don?
The distance from the well to the proposed mound, I see, is sixty-five feet, which is, appears to be closer than the existing was. What, what's our limits on that? Maybe I missed it when I was reading through this, but-
I don't know, so I would refer this question to Ken.
I believe the standard is at least fifty feet.
Fifty? Okay, okay.
Other questions of staff? Hearing none, is the applicant present, did he wish to add anything? I ask you to please come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Goze, address is seventy-four fifty-one, one hundred and ninetieth Street North. Just one slight correction, I think, is that the existing mound, as I understood, wasn't failing, according to Washington County, but it doesn't meet their current updated regulations. I forget when it was built exactly, but, so it's failing the new requirements, but it's technically still working, we're able to, to use it. Or I think it would have needed to be replaced before we, we moved in. And then I, it was, you can see it, I don't know if it was mentioned, but the existing mound was, is closer to a wetland than this one would, would be. My last comment is, we don't really care where it is, we just want to have a septic, so, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Kevin?
No, I don't have a question of the applicant, I have a question of staff.
Any questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
So my question to staff is, if it's not failing and it's working properly, Washington County, do they have a requirement that says you have to remove it?
If it's, my understanding, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, at a point of sale, Washington County requires a septic system inspection, testing. And if it's not up to current standards, then as a condition of the sale, the county requires it be either upgraded or replaced. And that was the case here.
Could we verify that somehow? Because my understanding is unless it's not, if, unless it's not working properly or unless it's not in good working condition, there's not a requirement to replace a properly operating system at this time in Washington County?
I, I don't have the exact words, but, yeah. I will say, I know this replacement was a condition of the sale of the property. And John and his partner recently bought the property, the previous sellers escrowed the money to have this new septic system installed because of the county requirement.
It was definitely, this is not why it came up, but it's definitely our experience that when we were looking for houses, this was a common thing that came up, that the septic was no longer complying with old standards. I was going to say, I, I don't have the words about why exactly it didn't pass the standards, but it was, my understanding from talking to Zirkie was that the water wasn't treated the way it should, the way newer septics treat the water, there's some sort of additional treatment step. So I think Washington County believes that it's like, bad for the environment the way it is currently, or something like that. Sort of a vague statement.
No, I understand. So my experience has been, there's two things, there's a compliance and there's an inspection. What a lot of people out there do when they sell their house is they do a compliance. Even though in a lot of cities, you don't need to have a compliance, you have to have an inspection done. If your system fails, then you have to replace your system. However, some cities do have a point of sale compliance inspection that's required. I'm not sure that Washington County requires a compliance inspection at a point of sale. That's all I'm asking, and if we could verify that. I understand you escrowed, or the seller escrowed the money for you, that's great. But just to be clear, I wanted to make sure if Washington County actually requires a compliance as point of sale for every house that's sold in the city of Washington County, that's not my understanding.
I don't, we don't have that information tonight. We certainly can do some further investigation with the county in regards to when their requirements kick in and bring that back to the planning commission.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, thanks.
Any other questions?
I do have one more. Regarding the existing mound system, you said that they could use the existing mound area to put in the new system? It would just cost more and it would be a little bit more challenging versus the proposed system where they're going to ask for a variance?
It would require more like soil correction and grading, and they, it was said that the soil that is where the existing mound is not as suitable for like wastewater management and treatment for a septic system, as opposed to the other.
But it could be done there because it's a mound system?
Yeah, it could be done.
Yeah.
And it also would be, it'd be a little closer to the wetland, too.
They'd still need a variance because they're too close to the wetland on that side.
On both sides?
Yeah, for the west.
Well, it just looks like there's more land there that they could move it around.
Can I have a second?
Sure. Sorry.
Sorry, so again, I wish Ben Zirkie were here because he'd be able to speak more precisely about this, but what he told me was that the existing location, if you put a septic there, he said that it could fail in the next like, two, three years because of the soil and it would, it could fail catastrophically, and because of the soil type there, it's a big risk. So that, that was what he told me. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not an expert, but he made it seem like it's, it could work, but it, but there's a risk.
Okay, now just asking questions.
And then one last thing is that if the variance were not approved, I don't know how this works like with the, the construction of the septic and, and the weather, we just want to beat the winter because I think Washington County doesn't care. Yeah, okay, thank you. Can I have a seller, if you have a question?
No, no problem.
Been interested in it because we have a lot of escrow money tied up in the process.
I'm sure you do.
And then this report, I've been able to call if that's helpful.
Nope.
So that question?
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Excuse me, we ask if you wish to speak to this application. Come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once we have heard from everyone in the public that wishes to speak, we will close the public hearing and it'll come back to the planning commission for further discussion and motion. So with that, I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-four PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online, or is there anything to be read into the minutes?
No, and no.
Thank you. I'll ask again, does anyone wish to speak to this application? And Ken, there's still no one online?
Still no one.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-five PM. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
To Jared, if I might just add, I did find Commissioner Miller on the county's website that a compliance inspection is required at a point of sale.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution zero-nine-one-one-two-four-zero-two, and with the following three conditions that are stated.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, sir.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yep. We'll move to item six B. This is also a public hearing. It's a variance for a porch addition for Aaron Wilson and Stephen Krenz, nine-one-nine North Shore Drive, and resolution number zero-nine-one-one-dash-two-four-dash-zero-three. Ken, are you presenting?
Yes, I am. All right, let's see if I've got luck with my hands. I'm just having a heck of a time here. Just a minute. Is that it? We don't need that one anymore. Here we go, let's try this. So as you introduced, God, my computer's not playing nice. The applicants, Aaron Wilson and Stephen Krenz, have requested a, or made application to the city for a variance for a side yard setback for the property of nine-nineteen North Shore Trail. The-
Give me a minute. I'll display for you.
Okay. Abby's going to put the images up. The, to put a porch addition on the lakeside of the home, that would, there's the property, thank you, Abby. There's all sorts of images there. The, again, these existing, there's the proposal, the existing conditions there, and then this next image shows the proposed addition going out towards the lakeside. The request for the side yard septic variance is because the existing house has a four-point-seven-foot side yard setback to the north, and they want to add the porch addition, which is shown in the light gray there, matching that same side yard setback. This image, too, shows some of the areas that are in a darker gray that they would be removing to help with the impervious surface coverage on this property. They actually, with the proposal, would be reducing that by about two percent, which is great. So in that, they initially thought they needed a variance for it, but they don't because they're improving the conditions on impervious. So the focus is on the proposed side yard setback, thank you, Abby. So again, the addition there is shown, includes a deck and a porch, both with covers over the top. This would be the image viewed from the lake, and then they had some other images prepared, all sorts of images of how this would look. And again, the, the key question is, and the request for the variance is to, again, have the addition line up with the existing side yard setback of four-point-seven feet. We shared this application with primarily our building inspections department and Nate Moats, our building inspector, had some comments about the requirements for meeting fire code type construction, because if approved, this would be less than five feet from the side property line. I've shared this with the project architect and he is aware of that. The watershed district noted that it's a small project, wouldn't require any major permitting from them, more, any more than a standard building permit would for any project. We did notify all the neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet. The initial mailing went out with a- The initial mailing went out with a, the site address is incorrect, but it got out to the neighbors in the area. With their application materials, they submitted two letters of support from the neighbors on either side. Those are included in your packet. We did not receive any other comments, other than the two that were with the initial submittal. So the question for the commission is, and what staff worked through, was the findings of fact that are required for approving a variance, and those are on, it's page three of the report, page 112 in the planning commission packet. And I think the commission is well aware that the code says that the planning commission shall not recommend approval of any variance application unless it finds failure to grant the variance will result in practical difficulties for the applicant. In staff's opinion, primarily mine, looking at this, I didn't, I don't believe this request meets all the criteria, which are items A through D or E.
E.
E, thank you, in the staff report, each of the five criteria for that finding for granting the, or the findings for granting a variance. So for example, the criteria one says, because of particular surrounding shape or topographic conditions, unique to specific parcel or land, a practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. And they, they have a unique situation, I am not denying that, with a four-foot, seven-foot setback. And I understand the request and the idea to extend that wall out at that same setback. But when it is, it's possible to build an addition with a 10-foot setback, and they still have a reasonable use of the property with some type of an addition, and even what they have now, I view that as a mere inconvenience and not a practical difficulty for the applicant. They have, as I said, a reasonable use of the property, they can have more use of the property with an addition that would meet setbacks. And I've outlined all these, again, in the report. It certainly would not appear to, either type of addition would be injurious or harmful to the neighbors. Fortunately, the properties to the north, there are no structures immediately near that part of the lot. However, you know, there is kind of a gap there between the structures. If they ever, they, the properties to the north and east wanted to build, now, we get, the potential properties or structures getting closer. So in summary, it's staff's opinion that the request does not meet the criteria, all the criteria for a variance approval. So we're recommending that the planning commission move to approve the resolution in your packet, and that is for denial of the variance request. That would allow a five-foot, 5.3-foot side yard setback variance to allow the construction of the porch addition, covered porch addition, as shown in the plans. With that, I will stop and take questions. The applicants are here, the applicant's architect is here as well to answer questions, provide some additional comments.
Question for staff? Hearing none, would the applicant or the architect wish to speak to this application? To your application? Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Please state name and address for the record, please.
Sure, I'm Erin Wilson, property owner at 919 North Shore Drive.
Stephen Krenz, 919 North Shore Drive.
Thank you.
Property owner.
And I'm Ryan Andrews with Rad Firm, residential designer, not licensed yet. Just wanna make sure, are we gonna be able to, you're gonna ask us questions after this as well?
We can, yeah, they may.
Okay, okay.
Did you wanna make a presentation?
I just have a statement. I might wanna show a few things. Can I plug in here?
Yep. So Ken slides from the podium to the...
There's a couple of studies that weren't included in your packet that I wanted to share with you.
That they're dragging?
Unless you, do you have access to our entire?
Well, let's see if this works, I just...
Sure.
It's always a little dicey when you're presenting from the lectern, to be honest.
Let's give it a try.
Technology at its best.
We do have 13 attachments from your application.
You do?
There was other images that I didn't...
Oh, you do have all, okay.
But I didn't include them in the initial packet. You were there, and then you just disappeared.
Okay, so...
I saw it. You had your statement, and then it looked like some images.
That's correct, I was just trying to...
It flashed for a minute. Otherwise, we'll move it over.
If you wouldn't mind, I just wanna refer to a couple figures that weren't included in the packet.
Let me...
But they were included in our application.
Hang on.
Okay, thank you.
If you want me to find them, hang on a minute. Oh, there, now you're coming back.
That's not me.
Oh, did you unplug?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, hang on. No, we don't want that one. We were just there. Just a minute.
Commissioner, I'm gonna step off for just a moment, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
It's partly me, too.
This isn't unusual.
Okay.
You know, if you think this is first time, we better wait, no.
I thought...
No, no, no.
What, where Ken failed you is that he should've told you, he should've come with the little story to tell why we're trying to get the, you know, be a little more interesting.
Or if there's something that you wanna say before you get your...
Yeah, if you wanna give a statement while I'm figuring this out, talk through it.
That's kinda part, I wanted to refer to that, like, as I gave the statement, I wanted to flip to that figure, which I have open on my machine, ready to go here.
Oh, do you want, should we try it again?
No, I don't think...
Well, let's try it.
That's the best option at this point. Are you able to open?
I'm trying.
Okay, thank you.
He had it, and we lost it. Wait for it.
Oh, the display settings. Yeah, can I just come really quick?
Sure.
No, that's okay. Oh, but that's your computer, I don't wanna touch your computer.
That's mine, yeah, do you want, like, to get underneath there, or what do you want?
Do you have a thumb drive? It's only on here.
No, what I wanna refer to is our variance application, because in the packet, it did not include some of the figures that I wanted to refer to.
Yeah.
So as long as you're able to open up, yeah, yeah.
So we should just be able to find...
Should we just be able to?
Yeah, I can just scan a little bit here.
Hey, it's not bad. I'm gonna try to extend my screen, because I wanna refer to some nodes that I had, while you guys can look at the actual, my neck.
So what we're gonna be looking at is what you're looking at.
Yep.
Okay.
First time in a while, I really like the way I set the ball.
Nope, just, nope, oh wait, hold on. You're on a Mac, right?
Yeah. And now I'm on a spinning wheel here, so...
They were at mine.
This...
It's absolutely free, pay the 200 bucks, it's free for two years.
Now my computer's like frozen, so it's not helping.
You pay a hundred dollars a year, and you have to play for two years.
Take it off, hold it.
And you can play the par three, you can walk on any time.
Yep, Duke clerk sent to all.
But you can make tee times, I don't know, a week in advance, or whatever, on the other one, but I just go up with a couple frames and play.
And I can sign their applications, so no...
Heck, do I...
I mean, you can pay more and play nicer.
And they all see...
Do you wanna come show me which one it is you want me to display?
I can just tell you what page number as well. Is that okay?
What's that?
What page number?
I've got the page number.
In the packet, in our packet, or your submittal? So here's your submittal.
Thank you.
I lived in...
Yeah, we're gonna look at figure I, J, if you don't mind just kinda opening up a few of those.
And then I'll just refer to which one, when we're ready.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the delay.
All right, and I gotta get it on the camera.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, there we go, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you regarding our variance request for the property at 919 North Shore Drive. We deeply respect the city's zoning guidelines, and fully understand the importance of maintaining the character and safety of Forest Lake community. However, we believe that the unique circumstances of this property, along with the thoughtful design and substantial improvements, we are proposing warrants approval of this variance. We are requesting a 5.3-foot side yard setback variance for the construction of a screened and porch, as Ken had mentioned, that would extend 16 feet towards the lake, aligning with the current 4.7-foot side yard setback of the existing house. It is worth noting that the structure is setback further from Forest Lake than any of the neighboring properties adjacent to them, and there's ample room to add a new addition towards the lake within the confines of the lake side setback. In response to the staff report recommending denial, we would like to respectfully present the following points. Number one, unique property characteristics create practical difficulties. This property, like many others in the vicinity, is non-conforming due to its small size, less than the required 15,000 square feet, and existing side yard setback requirements of less than 10. The home was built in 1962 before current setback regulations were in place. The lot size, shape, and the high water table create significant constraints that are unique to this parcel and beyond control of the owners. The design and structural layout of the existing house make it practically difficult to comply with the 10-foot side setback without creating structural ramifications, poor aesthetics, and functional challenges to the new addition. Alternate studies were submitted with our application to show what both a six-foot side setback, if you wanna flip to figure H, please, would look like. We also have a couple of renderings as well of what that looks like. As, as you know, current non-conforming properties with side yard setbacks of six feet or greater are allowed to align with that existing envelope wall at six feet. We also looked at another study, if you wanna go to figure J, I through J, which was the 10-foot setback. So there, we've got a study that shows what that looks like. I think the elevation is a fairly good one. We also have some renderings as well, if you wanna go to the next...
I don't have them all open, so it'll take me a second.
Yeah, study renderings, thank you. So there's a great shot of what it looks like if we match that side yard setback of 10 feet that that code calls for. The proposed 4.7-foot setback maintains the same lines as the house, which is critical for functional, cost-effective, and safe construction. This practical difficulty is not a mere inconvenience, but a necessity due to the structural realities of the site. We've got a, you know, in variance request, it talks about certain unique conditions regarding topography or vegetation. What it doesn't talk about is a water table that's less than three or four feet from their slab on grade. So if we're able to utilize the existing footings on the corner of the house, we're gonna be better off structurally by utilizing those corner posts and building off of that. Number two, the proposed use is reasonable and consistent with the neighborhood. The variance that we're seeking is not excessive. Many neighboring homes also do not meet the current setback in lot size standards, and the proposed screened porch, in addition, is in harmony with the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. It is a modest extension of the existing home designed to improve livability and enable the owners to age in place, a goal that aligns with the needs of many homeowners in the area. Number three, circumstances are unique to the property not created by the landowner. The house's current location and its non-conforming setbacks existed long before the current owners purchased the property in 2011. They were not aware of any side yard setback requirements when they purchased the property. These conditions are inherent to the lot and were not created by the homeowners. The proposed addition respects the existing layout, maintaining a continuity that is structurally and aesthetically sound. Denial of the variance would not correct any of the pre-existing non-conformies either. This project number four has no detrimental impact on the public welfare or neighborhood character, as Ken had mentioned. And I will say, however, to the city code comments, I was not prepared to, usually typically those were comments that we would get when we apply for a permit set, right? Totally wanna comply with all city codes here, absolutely. I did overlook that five-foot requirement for the side yard setback for a fire-rated assembly, so this, this, this request that we're asking you is for the variance to be basically at 4.7 feet or greater from the property line. So we'll be able to make that adjustment during permitting and bring that out to five feet. So I will say that, basically, in light of city comments after initial code review, the project will be designed, permitted, and constructed to comply with all building codes, ensuring that it will enhance rather than diminish the value and appeal of the property and surrounding areas. Number five, last point, consistency with the spirit and intent of zoning ordinance. The purpose of zoning ordinance is to balance the interests of homeowners with the preservation of neighborhood character and public safety. This variance request is in keeping with that purpose. Granting the various variance will not compromise the intent of the setback requirements, as the addition is modest in size, poses no safety risks, and aligns with the established character of non-conforming homes in the neighborhood, more than enforcing a 10-foot side setback would. Furthermore, we are reducing the overall impervious surface on the lot, demonstrating our commitment to responsible environmental practices and compliance with city goals, showing our commitment to our community, the lake, city standards, and longevity of the home. In conclusion, we are asking the planning commission to support this variance request based on the practical difficulties imposed by the lot's unique circumstances, the reasonableness of the proposed use, and the absence of any harm to the community or neighboring properties, and also the fact that the variance is consistent with the spirit of the zoning ordinance. We believe this proposal is a reasonable and thoughtful approach to improve the property while preserving the character and values of the Forest Lake neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. We respectfully request your approval of our proposal and variance request.
Thank you. Questions to the applicant?
Is the property unusable without the addition?
Does it work for you? I'll let you speak to that.
It's absolutely usable. The house is very minimal square feet. We have aging parents that we'd like to provide, you know, kind of additional cover and just a little bit more outside room for our guests. We're, we actually, as Ryan had mentioned, you know, went through some thorough conversations with both neighbors, especially the one that was more impacted on the northeast side, where that we're asking the variance, and they're in full support, no concerns. So, that answers your questions.
I, I'll add to that, it's only, oh, excuse me.
We are live on TV, so, so that's one of the reasons we ask everybody, comes to the microphone, so the thousands that are watching can experience this.
Well, I will also, there's one that's watching for sure, but I will add that the finished square feet is only 1,000 square feet. So, you know, it's a two-bedroom house, it's very mod, it's small. Let's be honest, right? It's a small house, it's 1,000 square feet. So, you know, no, I mean, does it work for them? It certainly could be better.
Well, yeah, but, but it wasn't big when you purchased it. Well, yeah, but it wasn't big when you purchased it. You know, it was.
No, but we're on the lake, you guys understand lake life around here. You got lots of, you know, holidays and guests and, you know, gatherings, and that was the intent of our purchase, and that, you know, was to try and enhance it a little bit without having to dump a ton of money into our rebuild, which we did explore and decided not to do.
There's a number of commission members who live on the lake.
Exactly, I know. So I saw the heads nod, yep, we know.
We're well versed on the issues.
So how many square feet does this add on to?
It's 16 by 24. Do some quick math on that.
350. 350 roughly.
384, about 400 feet, 400 square feet, excuse me.
You said that when you do your permit, you're gonna bring it in, so that you'll.
Be in compliance?
Yeah, you'll be in compliance. So if you're bringing it in, that means that you're not using the corner foundation. You're bringing it in or you're not.
Yeah, it's only 4 inches from the corner. So to get 5 feet, we're going, we're basically would make that adjustment on the fly and permit to go from 4.7 feet that was approved to more than 5, so we can actually have a screened-in porch wall there rather than a fire-treated wall.
I believe it has to be at least 6 feet.
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, for the fire code, the difference happens at 5 feet. The 6-foot rule comes in if the existing wall was at 6 feet setback, side yard, and they wanted to do an addition with the 6-foot. We wouldn't be having this conversation, they would just be in building permit. But since the existing wall is at 4.7, there's no provision in the code to say you can maintain the 4.7-foot. But there is language, if it's 6 feet or greater, you can maintain that existing or extend that same side yard setback.
Kevin?
Question, I'm looking at a photo on 124 of our packet. It appears the garage roof and the house roof are split, is it not attached? On your drawing, it shows it as one.
That might be a shadow.
It's attached, it's just a different roof line.
And then towards the front of that home site, I see there's another building that appears to be into the boundary lines even closer. Is that a accessory dwelling building, or what is that?
So it is, it's a single-unit dwelling. It has its own property number. Both dwellings have its own PIDs. But when we purchased the house, it came as a double.
So you own both properties?
Yeah, we own.
Do you rent that out, or what is that?
It's, we use it as an office, kinda just spare bedroom for our guests.
And I might just add that, I believe you told me that it was actually the regional cabin.
Yeah, yes.
Up there next to the street side.
So if I'm, so are the calc, so these are two parcels? So are my impervious calculations done as this is one parcel or two parcels?
As one parcel.
Mr. Chair, as far as we knew, it was all one parcel, there was not separate ID numbers.
We, I don't, when I checked on the Ramsey County, it's only one, it's only, it's only one. I believe, it's only one PID, it's one parcel.
Two property IDs, yeah.
They have two addresses. There's, the USPS has them for two addresses, but it's only one property, it's only one PID.
But you checked on the Washington County website?
Correct.
You said Ramsey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't scare me.
I live in Ramsey. It wouldn't show up on the map if I looked on Ramsey.
Just making sure you're paying attention, Susan.
Another thing I'd like to add, just to clarify, it's North Shore Drive.
On that trail, yeah.
Yeah.
So the main parcel is 919, that's where we live. That accessory structure back there is 921. But our, in good faith, commitment in exchange for the variance is reducing the imperio surface over the both properties.
But but our impervious surface rules are both a percentage and a maximum. Okay, and the maximum is 3,750 square feet. And you're a little over 18% over that with what you're proposing. So in terms of telling us that it's a really significant decrease in your impervious surface that's going to have a positive effect on water quality, I'm not going there.
What we're saying is it would be a reduction of what it is now.
And that, yeah, that's correct. After our discussion with Ken and shooting, targeting for that percentage, we obviously acknowledged, I think we were at like 34-some percent before we started this process, and we were able to get that down. Now, it's still not under 30 or 31, but at least it's on its way. And it's a significant improvement, I would say.
So my question is, what is difficulty pushing this structure a little over 4 feet to the east, west? Yeah, west? Not necessarily doing this, but taking the whole structure and moving it 4 feet. What is the practical difficulty? It's slab-on-grade now?
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly, so take the whole thing, meaning the whole porch, and shift it 4 feet?
To the west.
Well, so on their floor plan, one of the things that they're trying to achieve here is, and what makes this project complicated and this design complicated is it's a split level. So there's three risers between the lower portion and the upper portion. They would like to have access out on, of their bedroom window, out onto their porch towards the lake, which to me seems reasonable, living on the lake. So by doing that and shifting it another 4 feet, if we look at that 10-foot side setback, however you wanna look at it with the rendering or the section of the plan, it makes that space basically unusable, completely unfunctional. And so far as to not even worth doing the project, I would say. And I guess when you look at some of the renderings where we do show what that 10-foot side setback looks like, to me, that doesn't, that's not in unison with the character of locality whatsoever. It's an architectural monstrosity and absolute train wreck because I think as you have acknowledged, there are several parcels that are less than 5 feet or 6 feet from the side yard setback. So Code has obviously tried to address these properties and show some leniency and some flexibility with those side setbacks. Now, I wish we had a 6-foot side setback because we wouldn't be here. But I guess at the end of the day, we are asking to align the structure. Now, we totally acknowledge that this is a conversation and maybe we don't get everything that we ask for, but are we able to meet in the middle somewhere? It might not be aligned, it might not be 10 feet, but can we agree that since the property is non-conforming, we could consider a 6-foot side yard setback in this condition?
One of the things that we try to do is to to grant that stuff happened. We've had two major changes to our zoning code since y'all brought the property, and we noticed those things. But we also try and reduce the number and amount of non-conforming things in the community. We try not to make more non-conforming things. We try not to make things worse. And and I agree with staff's assessment of this project and whether or not it meets the spirit, intent, and language of our zoning code. I'm trying hard, but I'm just not convinced that this is a good variance for us to approve. And while I really like the top picture that's there, it doesn't, it's not showing how close other properties really are, and I I I tried hard, but I do agree with staff on their recommendation.
So this would be the only acceptable solution to them putting a screened-in porch on, is what you're seeing on the screen right now?
Has that had a 10-foot setback? What's on the screen?
That's correct.
You can go further to the west. If you want, if you want the same side.
He's just saying it messes up his roof lines and the aesthetic look, but we can't.
Trying to match the depth of the roof, trying to match the extent of the eve, trying to just match it so it looks like it's always been there. I think that's our goal as designers, is to make something feel like it fits. And as soon as we're trying to kinda push this, you know, round peg through a square hole, it falls apart. Looking at the 6-foot study, you know, it's manageable. I think the design intent is still there, it respects city's code for allowing that 6-foot side setback for non-conforming properties. And the reason why we wanted to include this is because we think it is worth considering, and we would like to ask you, if it's not the 4.7 side yard setback that's being approved, perhaps we could consider a 6-foot side yard setback. That would be completely consistent with city code for non-conforming houses that don't need side yard setbacks.
Ken, what other variances, if they did the 6-foot, what other variances would be required?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it'd just be for the side yard setback, reducing it from 10 to 6. And what he's, Ryan's indicating is, as I touched on earlier, is in our non-conforming code, we do allow homes with a 6-foot side yard setback to continue with that same 6-foot setback without the need for variance. So they're viewing that as kind of a compromised position.
And for us, it's only 16 inches off the corner, so is it, you know, it's not 5 and 5.3, it's less than 1 and 1/2 feet away from the corner.
And if I may, it sounds like because of the building code requirements, the side yard setback would be at least 5 feet with what they're going to do. And so now so that reduces it, that by default reduces it some, and now does the question, is it could push to 6 feet or 10 feet, or not at all? This is the 6-foot image, I believe, on the screen.
I guess we just, we understand the importance of complying with the city's zoning guidelines and maintaining the harmony in the neighborhood. We just wanna express our flexibility in working with you to achieve a solution that balances both practicality for the homeowners and adherence to zoning regulations.
Without the minimum 6 foot, we will kill the project and think about other alternatives. This is really what we thought was best practice, good faith, neighbors approve. 6 foot?
Other questions to the applicant? I do have to host a public hearing also, so. Any questions right now? Thank you.
Thank you for your time as well.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We ask if you're willing to speak to this issue, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Once we have heard from all parties, we will then close the public hearing and bring it back for further discussion and decision by the Planning Commission. So open the public hearing at 8:24 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online or anything that needs to be read into the minutes?
Nothing additional, Mr. Chair.
We have two letters from a neighbor on each side.
Correct.
It's already in our packet, that's good enough?
Correct.
Okay. And no one online, correct?
No one.
All right. I'll ask one last time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? And still no one online?
Correct.
Having no one online and seeing no one moving forward to the lectern, close the public hearing at 8:25 PM. Commissioners, what would you like to do?
Ken, could you, if we go to the, the 6-foot was discussed again, and we allowed them to go to 6 feet. My understanding is they wouldn't, the only variance that would be required would fall under that guideline of what the existing house was 6 feet, that they can continue that line along. So we'd be allowing 6-foot, and there's no fire code issue, there's no
Correct.
Anything else.
Just to be clear, I'll read the language for you. Additions to detached, single-family and two-family dwellings not meeting the required side yard setback, but not less than 6 feet from the side lot line, may have an addition at the existing side yard setback. So again, if the house was at 6-foot, they could put a six, addition on with a 6-foot setback, just go through building permit, no variance required. So what they're proposing is if, they're gonna have to move it a little bit because of the fire code. If they move it to 6-foot, to kind of somewhat follow that 6-foot rule that's already in the code, that still needs a variance because it's now at 4.7 feet, but it's less of a variance than what they were initially asking for.
Kevin?
But we're only voting on the application in front of us.
Correct.
If we denied this application, they would have to come back with a new application.
Or appeal it.
Or appeal it. However, if we were to table this, that would allow them time without going through an additional permit fee, an additional start-over process, to bring back the request for a variance to a 6-foot. Correct?
Yes, and or with that, if that's the direction the commission wants to go, you could direct staff to prepare information to bring back at a future meeting for, with a resolution of support that you could adopt. They wouldn't necessarily have to bring new materials, we know all the, all the material, or all the.
We would need a new site plan.
It'd be a modification.
Well, they have included three different site plans, they had the 4.7, 6-foot, and the 10-foot options. I did not include all those in your packet, I, we already have all those. But I don't know that they're being valued, and continuing the public hearing and have them come back, if the direction of the commission is, we're okay with the 6-foot setback, staff could just be directed to bring that back in a updated report with a resolution to approve that variance without a whole bunch of extra work.
And that would be some just on the consent agenda, then?
Could be.
We pull everything on there anyway, so.
I'm just saying we could try.
We don't always pull everything.
Chair, you can grant the variance and something less, but you can't grant more. So tonight you could grant the variance to the 6-foot because it's less than what is being requested, so there, my math is hard. They're asking for 4.7.
So since we're
Since you're going to 6.
Decreasing the variant.
Exactly. You could take that action tonight in motion and then direct staff to bring back the resolution memorializing.
We'd have to bring a revised resolution back with the 6-foot approval.
Kevin?
So if our thoughts are, we're okay with 6, we're talking about 1.3 to 1.7 difference, we have to determine, is that really that important?
But I think that is important. We've got an adjacent property that someone might want to rebuild and down the road. That's where it becomes a bigger deal.
And if, if, for instance, they were to sell the property and the folks that bought it just decided to start over, they could use the footprint that is way unconforming as long as they build on that same footprint. But the footprint of the deck isn't considered a footprint of the foundation, is it?
It would be because they're gonna put in foundations for the deck.
Aren't they just putting in post footings?
They just put footings in. It's gonna have a roof on it.
Just a couple of post footings, yeah. Probably helical piers since we're so close to the table, so there wouldn't even be any concrete down there.
But to.
At the porch, at the new addition porch area.
To address the concern of Commissioner Miller, if you grant a variance for 4.7 for 16 additional feet, that would be a vested land right for the property that if somebody wanted to rebuild in the future, it's part of the structure, they could build that as structure.
A McManion at 4.7. Not going there. Yeah, I get it. I was thinking it was important to the deck and it wouldn't matter. I have a struggle with six because six becomes the property right moving forward and that's. Just try and get a firefighter in there.
And not to push it to the city council, but if we reject it, they can appeal it to the city council.
Correct.
And I would be happy to attend the city council meeting and explain my personal reason for it.
Commissioner Young, can you speak into your microphone, please?
I apologize. And, and I would, I would, if that appeal were to happen, I would be happy to attend city council and explain my reasoning, not the commission's reasoning.
Well, I think they would probably review this meeting, I would hope. I don't know how they go about their business, but I would hope they would.
In cases of appeal, we try to include minutes or draft minutes, summary of the meeting, the discussion, certainly the vote that was taken.
Mr. Chair, for me, is there any thought, I was starting to sense and see some hidden odds on a consensus, but are we too early to ask that question if there is a consensus?
I have a question on that. So if we grant the six-foot, if they were to rebuild, they can rebuild at six feet?
Yes.
On that whole side?
No, just on the area that they would be.
Just with the part with the six-foot setback.
So if they decided to change that from a porch and a patio to an enclosed part, complete enclosed dwelling?
Yeah.
They can do that?
Yes.
Which is why I struggle.
Come up to the microphone.
I guess it's commission's option if you want to take more comments or not.
Is that okay? I just want to reiterate that that's not the intent here. There's no, no future planning with, you know, malicious intent to add on conditioned space in the future. They're just simply trying to add on the screened porch and that's it. I totally understand where it goes.
We're not concerned about them, but if they sold it, somebody else could do that.
I understand. We don't know what the future holds.
It's part of the challenge of being here is, is we've, we've got to pretend like we have these crystal balls and we know what's going to happen five, 10, 20 years from now on this property that we are now setting the legal standard for.
Because right now, if they rebuilt the existing house, they could build the same distance from the side yard of 4.8 feet or whatever it is, right?
Come up much further ahead to the lake.
If, if they got a building permit within 180 days of the time of the destruction.
Yeah.
So if a tornado hit it or a fire.
And you could meet the impervious requirements.
So they could be at four point some feet down the one side and the other side would have to be 10?
Or at least 10, yes.
What I'm told all the time by municipalities is it's not acceptable to just merely reuse the footprint in the foundation of a house, excuse me, to reuse merely the footprint of the house. Basically, the requirement at that point is that you reuse the foundation, which as a block wall, a CMU block wall, it's not preferable as an architect or a designer to reuse those walls. So I would say there is absolutely no possibilities of them using a helical pier to construct a wall at a later date.
That's not the case of reusing the structure. They get a vested land right to build 4.7 feet from the property line. So the whole property could be scraped if there was a fire or another act of nature. The property could be scraped and they can build that structure. Two feet, two stories, 4.7 feet right on that property line.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And so that is the concern is the long-term implications.
And that was the original building plans is that the length of the building right now would collapse and we'd go up. We've already had the plans drawn and we had them reviewed prior to Ken. So we've considered that option as well, but not going that, this way I think this is kind of middle ground, but.
I have to say, I did not know that, that it became the new site, so. Because my understanding, they bulldoze it, they gotta comply with all of them.
They bulldoze it, that's different. If there's an act of nature that destroys it and they submit a building permit within the time allotted by city code and state law, bulldoze the house.
Someone comes in, they want to bulldoze it, build a new house, they gotta comply with all of that.
Correct, correct.
I misunderstood.
Well.
Except for the 10 by 16 area.
Except for that 10 by 16 area.
If that's granted a variance.
Yeah, that would be a vested land right against the property.
Further discussion, commissioners?
Can I draw?
Could we add a condition that they could not rebuild with a six-foot setback?
You can't, but you can get really specific in your variance. You can say a variance, a six-foot variance for a 16 by 26, open unenclosed screed, single-story screened porch.
And deck.
And deck. And then what could, you know, I mean, that's a way for us to protect our, you know, the approval in the future, future owners, certainly not them, right? Because they, they want this. But then future owners, when they come in and we see them enclose it or they get a building permit to want to expand it, go out, go up, we can say, no, you don't have that land right. You only have the land right for the six-foot encroachment or the six-foot setback for the 16 by 26, single-story screened-in deck and patio. But you have to be really specific. And so I think that that would be, you know, it could be at this point a direction to staff to bring back those documents to memorialize because you'd really want to make sure that the approvals are very much in line exactly for what you're wanting today is what you would see in the future as well.
Because if we do some, my opinion, if we do some like that, whoever's gonna build is gonna push just closer to the lake based on the view of the adjoining neighbors. So I would think it'd be pretty impractical that they'd want to put a screened porch in the middle of their house. But you know, I've seen a lot of stuff on the lake just come with on a pontoon cruise.
It's just a breezeway, it's just a breezeway in the middle of the, I mean, house I grew up in had one of those.
Chair, if you're specific in that variance request of a six-foot setback for a 16 by 26, they could move that whole house and then have that screened porch offset. You know, they'd have to meet the 10-foot for the new, if it was a new home, not these folks, the future people that are gonna scrape it and rebuild because that's not gonna happen, never mind. But do you see what I'm saying? It doesn't necessarily say that screened porch has to be exactly in this location. That screened porch could be anywhere on that property.
This is a 50-foot line. They're gonna build, whoever comes in is gonna build edge to edge of the setback.
Yeah.
Well, and honestly, improvements to our home sites are, there's nothing wrong with that. Those are good things. They increase value for you, they increase value for neighbors. I don't see it as a bad thing. The concern we have from a, from a planning commission is, is fire, those sort of things that whether it's six-foot or four-foot, it's still tight. And so I have a real hard time saying, yeah, we can do it at six, but we can't do it at four. I mean, to me, that's not a big difference personally, that's all I'm sharing. Because the value, I think, is there. And I understand it's, it's not a big difference, but again, the stuff that we do has, sets precedence. Well, it does, except that when it comes to variances, there's no precedence. We decide on each and every individual case, it's specific to each property. Isn't that correct, staff? That is, that.
Yes and no.
Yes.
It depends.
That is the ideal, but, but you've been here just as long as I have and it's, well, you know, you gave them the three feet, but now their three feet is blocking my view of the sunrise, so I need another two feet and it's just two feet. I do know that. All right, and it's just two feet, so, and we've been here, done that, and it's, it's. I agree 100%. Which is why these things are so very difficult. They are very difficult. And, and they do have practical use of their property and they could build a screened porch that would not require a variance. And, and so, as I said earlier, I agree with the staff analysis of this request. And my inclination would be to approve that staff analysis and to approve the resolution that we were presented tonight. However, realizing that y'all do the lake thing, well, I don't, okay? I don't have to worry about setbacks on 20 acres. I'm, I'm trying to find a.
You still have setbacks, Susan.
Don't you dare commit a variance for a setback.
Truth. Truth.
Planning commissioners don't get special treatment, 20 acres or 10.
Yes, that's truth, but if I can't figure out a way to put what I want, beating all the stuff, I'm just stupid.
I think that condition on the six-foot variance is very fair. Didn't even expect that we didn't cover that today.
Planning commissioners, I'm willing to make a motion to table. All right? And that would allow staff to come back with a resolution. They have heard our comments and our concerns. It would not be denying so that we would not be requiring them to come back with a whole new variance request. We have done that in the past. All right?
Before I ask for a second, are you on page N for a six-foot setback?
Reluctantly, yes, because y'all do that lake thing.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, it'd be clearer or easier for staff to have that clear direction in what you're looking for and what would be brought back in the future.
All right, so let's make it, Kevin?
If there's the consensus.
But since we maybe have a consensus or maybe we have enough votes to do this, we actually can make a motion to approve the resolution with the changes versus tailing it and having them come back to us.
With a memorial, a resolution memorializing the action.
Right. My concern is making sure that we get it perfectly right on the fly here. I'm not that good. Okay.
All right, so before I ask for a second, we.
I haven't made the motion yet.
Okay.
I said I would consider that if we, if that is where the group is.
I better put, charge up my hearing aids a little better. Are we on a general consent, take a straw poll for the six feet?
Yeah. Memorialization, as Abby said.
With the exact dimensions, blah, 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 blah.
16 by 26 screened in. Single-story, open, unenclosed, fully-screened porch and deck.
That probably is shown on the screen.
Yep. Exactly. All right.
Is that within? Is that within?
Yeah, we'll make sure to, to reference because I think I hear you're wanting us to bring back the formal documentation. We will definitely use the site plan to get the exact dimensions down for you.
Not one inch more.
We'll probably even get that height to the top of the gable if you'd like.
Well, and I think that that is wise. I agree. All right?
I wouldn't have said it if I, I mean, we're going down this route, right? So we'll.
Lock her tight. And I'm going to encourage you to think about, as you're doing this, further decreasing your impervious surface. One of the things that, that we hear complaints about all the time, and I see city council member Husnick here, and he hears is, is the water quality in the lake and impervious surface and lawns right up to the edge of the lake, you're making your own trouble. Okay? So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do make a motion that we table this action, this resolution tonight, and that we direct staff to come back to us with a new resolution that is the six-foot setback and the 16 by 26 screened-in porch with bells and whistles. Fully screened-in porch and deck. Fully screened-in porch and deck with the congruent roof line as stated earlier and as proposed in one of the applicant's drawings.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second, a tables, a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We are done with, once we do a table, we are done with discussion of the issue until it comes back to us. That's how the whole Robert rules of order, the token one I know, works. And do we have an idea when it's gonna come back?
We don't have another meeting scheduled in two weeks. This would be your only item on your agenda. We certainly can.
Well, we wouldn't have to come back if it meets.
No.
Because you.
It's still a variance.
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're kind of late. It might have been cleaner to have a resolution to approve it with a six-foot setback and then ask staff to bring that back in a formal resolution for adoption rather than tabling, having the staff bring it back. We know the intent, until it's adopted, it's not adopted.
It's not approved.
We're a wee bit late here?
Yeah.
Unless you want to reopen the item.
Yes, anyone who voted for the item can make a motion to reconsider. Anyone who voted aye on this can do a motion to reconsider on the table. So since I made the motion, I will make a motion to reconsider the immediately previous action.
I have a motion, is that the same person?
Doesn't have to be.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it with the reconditions on it.
Reconsider.
Reconsiderations on the table.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Back the freight train up. Try this again.
Okay.
So I don't want to put words in the mouth.
So if somebody, go ahead, Ken.
If it's the consensus, the commission, make a motion to approve with a six-foot side yard setback rather than the requested 4.7, subject to all the conditions and discussion. We talked about the footprint and the building height and following the plans that were one of the submittals in the packet. And then we will bring that final resolution with all those conditions back to you to formally get it adopted. In the meantime, they can start working on final building plans and getting ready to submit for the building permit.
All right. Head again. Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve a six-foot side yard setback variance for a sixteen by twenty-six screened in-
Single-story.
For, single-story-
Open.
Open, unenclosed, fully-screened porch and deck.
Nicely done. At, at the property?
At, yes.
Yep, that's good.
Yeah.
You're good.
I have a motion-
At this particular property that has been under consideration for forty minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll try it again, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
We will bring that back for formal blessing.
Good luck with your project. As we, as all of us lake people-
Invite us over for the vote around. We'll be watching it.
I drive by you folks all the time.
There will be a bar, so.
You pay to know Robert's rules of order. Well, see, I'm late. Well, now you know too.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your work.
Be in touch.
Don't forget your water bottle, sir. Do you think there's water in there? I just assumed, I'm sorry.
All right, we will move on to, uh, item number seven-eight, a local affordable housing aid. Abby, are you presenting?
I am. A couple of discussion topics tonight, um, some policy-based things that we just need a little direction on so we can keep moving forward. So tonight, the goal is planning commission discuss and help provide some recommendation. These things will end up going to the council, probably fumbling back down in different ways, but tonight, first up, local affordable housing aid. I know I brought this, the commission, um, it's been a while, but I believe it was after the state had passed the new legislation that would help metropolitan local governments develop and preserve affordable housing, to keep families from losing housing, and to help those experiencing homelessness find housing. So this is a new state tax that disperses to the city. So some of the estimates that were coming out for 2024 were about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. We actually certified it in, but it was only five months for a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand this year. 2025 estimates, though, are about three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and we stay es, in that estimate range of about three, three-fifty each year. Um, and that, we'll keep getting that each year until that, uh, tax, if the state decides that tax goes away, we get the disbursements twice a year, so next year, if we get three-twenty-five, it's gonna get split, one-seventy-five, and, you know, I don't know, easy math, one-sixty-eight, whatever it is. Um, so there are certain qualifying projects the state says that we can use them for, emergency rental, so to provide direct assistance for emergency rental housing. The priority to those that make fifty percent or less of the area median income. New construction or redevelopment, so we can partner with or we can provide direct assistance to support construction acquisition. Again, um, we have some maximum thresholds for that area median income, where we're really targeting that fifty percent area median income. And then rehabilitation, so opportunities to assist in rehabilitation of aging, I put in there rental, but aging housing stock. So we have two different programs that we can use, rental and owner occupied. What's interesting in the rehabilitation is you see that most of the other programs have that, um, aiming at, uh, less than fifty percent of the AMI with a, with a maximum of fif, eighty percent AMI. The owner occupied rehabilitation increases to a hundred-and-fifteen percent of the AMI. Still has a, but has that lower priority of, or that priority of less than a hundred percent AMI. That's different and new, and there are really no programs quite available for that a hundred-and-fifteen percent AMI. We'll keep talking about programs here in just a second. Yeah?
For the rest of the, the commission, Forest Lake's AMI is?
I knew you were gonna ask. So I've had trouble determining Forest Lake's AMI because we quoted Washington County's AMI in the 2020, or the 2040 comprehensive plan. Did I bring my comp plan with me? I didn't bring my comp plan with me. I'll get that number.
I looked it up the last time, and I've, I forgot.
It's fairly, I mean, I want to say it was like sixty-five-
There is a specific one for Forest Lake.
Um, I, I might be able to, as we were discussing. Um, I knew you were going to, and I apologize for not having that.
Abby, before you go any farther, can you spend one minute? We have some newer members on the commission, explain to what AMI is.
AMI is the area median income, so it's the average income, um, or the median income of households in the community. So, there is a dollar threshold, and I knew Susan was gonna ask, and I should have had it, and I apologize that I don't. I will say it's-
And I should have looked it up, I apologize.
It's low, uh, less, certainly less than a hundred thousand dollars. I want to say it's probably floating around that sixty, or a thousand potentially.
I thought it was around sixty-two. I apologize.
That's all right. Um, so our 2040 comprehensive plan does identify some related goals and objectives to improve and maintain existing housing units. Um, we would consider city-funded activities aimed at rehabilitation or acquisition, um, for maintenance, and increase the availability for new affordable housing. We don't necessarily have comprehensive plan goals and objectives that relate to that emergency rental housing, so not to say that we couldn't put our money in those programs, but, um, leaning on our kind of new construction redevelopment or rehabilitation is what we said we would probably be doing with funding in the future. So we do, we have identified a partnership opportunity with Washington County Community Development Agency. Washington County CDA already provides a direct emergency rental assistance. They already provide funding for, assist with funding for new construction or redevelopment, and they do have programs as, available for rental rehabilitation to that eighty percent area median income threshold. The one area that they don't, um, have would be that owner occupied rehabilitation. But Washington County CDA has said that any city that is interested in developing a program for the owner occupied rehabilitation, they certainly, up to that one-hundred-and-fifteen percent, they certainly are willing to discuss that with cities. So tonight, discussion with the commission. First thing that I'm just wondering off the cuff, if the planning commission's interested in, um, the city council, the city staff partnering with Washington County CDA to administer these programs? Um, I'll make this one a little easy for you. We can't use this money for staff. So we have to find somebody that will take our big bag of money and do these things for us, um, because I can't hire anyone to do it for us. So, um, I think our options are to partner with the county or to start exploring other nonprofit organizations, and I'm just wondering what the commission's thoughts are in terms of-
Does it stay in our community if we partner with them?
It would wholly stay within our community. Yes, Susan?
We had a prior partnership with Habitat.
Oh.
Um, and it was for the houses on Goodview. Um, in fact, they just, if you drove Goodview, they just ripped out all the scrub-
Oh, yeah.
Right on Goodview, but it was that area where we had a partnership with Habitat.
Okay.
Councilmember Husnick may remember that.
Sidebar on that, we got a code complaint about that and had to get them to mow that.
But, but that was where it is.
The program was. So we have had maybe existing partnerships out there that we should probably take a look at.
It have perhaps gone dormant. Um, it was just before COVID, I think, um, or before COVID, and, and I thought that one or two of the properties, um, were, were developed, um-
Yeah.
I don't remember if it was, um, land trust or, or what, but I know that there was a partnership.
Oh, but it could have been maybe a land trust. Okay.
Yeah, um, so that-
I'll look into those.
That would be something that I would strongly encourage that we take a look at. Are commissioners familiar with Habitat for Humanity? And, and their requirements for teaching people how to take care of a home, their requirements for sweat equity, um, their requirements for helping the next person too? Um, it, it, to me, it, it gets at helping homes be affordable, but it also helps build community.
Sure. I'll look into, um, that, uh, previous partnership and just what other kind of potential partnerships there could be in terms of their programming and how it could align with some of those things. Um, I, it, I would still imagine that the, that the commission would want us to explore our options with the other, um, county agency in terms of trying to find the programs that we can utilize to get our money out, right? I mean, that's really what we want to do more than anything, but we can look at-
Are you proposing hiring a consultant to do that?
No.
Thank you.
No.
That's a recommendation. I was gonna say, would it be, it'd be a lot smarter to pay on, along with the county, to help save you legwork here and work together to come up with a, a better solution or more of a opportunity to disperse this funds.
Yep, great.
Can, can you help me out here, Abby? I mean, it, I don't mean to sound flippant that this isn't much money, but three-hundred thousand dollars doesn't go real far these days?
It doesn't.
What, what's kind of realistic on this? Is, is a Habitat where we give them funds to buy materials or pay for an electrician? Maybe get one or two houses a year?
I think we, we have a, and so we'll, I'll get down to a little bit. We can hop here to aid dis, disbursement recommendations. So again, our, what we can use, ooh, jumped ahead too much there. What we can use them for is emergency rental, new construction or redevelopment, or rehabilitation. So let's just say through, three-hundred thousand dollars. Three-hundred thousand dollars on the new construction of, let's say, an apartment building is, it's nothing. It's, you, you're looking at one percent of your total cost, right? You're, you're, but one percent, and you get, you know, fifty units, a hundred units, maybe that's a, a way we want to go. The, uh, ways that I would suggest the city really explore are those rehabilitation options. We have a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing in our community. Everything in kind of what I would call old Forest Lake, so west of downtown, south of eight, north of ninety-seven. We're really looking at a highly concentrated area of older housing stock that is, is increasingly affordable because of its age. Those properties are probably in, there are a lot of those properties that are in need of rehabilitation. You give a homeowner that has a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, a fifteen-thousand-dollar, you know, low-interest, no-interest loan, that can go a long way. Three-hundred thousand dollars, and you have fifteen-thousand-dollar loans, what's that? Somebody do quick math.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty, you know, residents that you're putting back into the, into the existing.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of cities have that, and they also have requirements when they do that where the people have to live there for a certain period of time and it's forgiven. Or, you know, they don't just give it to them.
Stay ten years or something.
Yeah, they don't just give it to them and say, here you go, fix up your house, and then sell it.
Right, yep, um, and-
Can we not use it as down payment assistance with anyone? Like, can the city use it as grants for down payment assistance?
No, um, well, in, no, I don't think so. That new construction, potentially if somebody needed some assistance with a down payment on a new home, but I don't believe we can use it for down payment assistance.
And-
These are areas.
And our, our, thank you for looking it up. Uh, our AMI is forty-eight thousand.
There we go.
And that was twenty-twenty-two, forty-eight, one-sixty-eight. My guess is that we're well below fifty thousand still for our average median income in the city. Um, I know that Washington County Social Services, um, knows of elders who would like to be able to stay in their homes, and for a lot of reasons, that is a good thing. But their homes may need assistance, um, may need upgrading on fire code safety, may need upgrading on doors, maybe upgrading on some bathrooms. And I think that that would be a really great place for the city to, to use these funds is to work with Washington County for elders that they may have identified that meet our AMI requirements, um, to help them stay in our community.
So that would be in that rehabilitation, be that rental or owner occupied.
Yeah.
I mean-
And I would, and my preference is that it be owner occupied. I, my, my preference is that, um, we have a significant, a really significant amount of rental property as it is. They, some of it on the books and some of it under the radar. And those are run as, as businesses looking at a, at a, at a profit motive, and what I would prefer to do is to help homeowners, elders in our community, be able to stay here. We, we need their wisdom, we need their history, we need, we need the, the things that they provide our community that are very unique.
Um, valid, great point, Susan. I agree with you. And I guess I, I'd be interested to hear in other, from other people in the, um, commission. If, if you, if I gave you a big pot of money right now, if I just said, here's three-hundred thousand dollars, do you want it to go to that one big project? Or are you, is there a preference to that one big project? Here's all three-hundred thousand to go to the three-million-dollar apartment building? Or is there more of a desirability to try to disperse it out through the community for rehabilitation projects?
I'd be more for the individual rehabilitation projects.
I would second that as well. Run it around.
Yeah, I think with the big projects, there's no guarantee that the price is gonna make, the price is gonna be affordable still for low-income people.
Well, you only give the money, though, for the, I mean, we, we'd have to develop parameters for all of this. And the county has parameters for some of these programs. And so, um, I, I don't want to necessarily spend a lot of time going back and looking at a Habitat partnership or a land trust partnership. If, if kind of the collective is, no, we, we really want to see, you know, the fifteen people in this room. I don't know if, but not, not the fifteen people in this room, but like, we want to see our local residents, owner occupied. We want to put money at a low cost or a, a, potentially a no cost, if maybe it's a forgivable loan program. But we'd rather see our money going that way than necessarily one big project. I see some heads nodding. I've heard from a few of you that you're, you're more inclined to say, yes, these rehab programs are something that we need, and we'd like to see the money going that way.
The city would have to give it to them. Can they charge interest?
Yeah, and, and-
Can we get interest on it then?
We'd have to, we have to chat with, yeah, the county, and really see, um, I've developed loan programs in the past where they're revolving loan programs, where you put your money into your big pool of, you know, you big pot, and then the interest collects, and then you, you can give more again later. The state's gonna keep giving us money as long as this tax is here, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars each year. Even if there was a, a nominal percentage, I'd assume some of that nominal percentage, we'd want, in need in agreement, to share with the county because they're, they do, are gonna provide staffing for us. They do have staff to do this already, and they do have a tax levy that can help support some of that. But over time, if programs like these are successful, we're gonna need to help offset those costs then. But yes, I think that all of these things are ways that we'd like to see the money going back into the community.
I would, you know, like, with the county, you know, I know, like, with their septic's, if you replace your septic, they'll do a low-interest loan, they take it out of your taxes, uh, for five years, twice a year. Now, that might be a little steep for some of these people, but it, it seems like they've got an awful lot of mechanisms that would be pretty easy to move forward versus trying to do something. But I'm also in favor of, um, especially if we can leave this money down in the heart of the city, I'm not gonna call it the old town, the heart of the city. Because there's a lot of nice houses that could use a front porch, or maybe need a bathroom, or they need something, but they're nice houses.
I, I-
And lots, and-
And this is, I mean, just, it, I, I've seen a pattern in communities. There's a lot of interest. People want to move to Forest Lake. There's great amenities, it's a great quality of life. We're starting to see people, and you see it already, and you've seen it for a while around the lake, that people will buy the, the little house on the lot, and then they'll come back and they'll build out, right? And so you want to find ways to put money into these properties to make sure that you're preserving that housing stock that is more affordable to your teachers, to your, you know, your interns, to, uh- to your teachers, to your, you know, your interns, to, well, I mean, that's, that's really what it comes down to. So, so I'm hearing, moreover, you would support rehabilitation projects. It sounds like owner occupied versus maybe rental. The only question I would have then is, the state says they're gonna kind of have that priority to households earning 80% area median income, but they would go up to owner occupied up to 115%. As I mentioned earlier, there are no programs in that 115% range. Are you favorable to us looking at expanding that program up to that 115%, which, you know, is a little over $50,000? It's still not a, a ton of money? Or do you want to stick with the existing programs that really look at the below 100% AMI?
I'm fine going at 115 primarily because 50,000, I don't know what kind of a house that would buy. I'm trying to do the math in my head, but I don't think there'd be too many in town that would be affordable. You'd have to be in it for a while, 10, 12 years. I would have no problem going at 115.
And I, I'm not looking to help somebody purchase new. What I'm, what I was hoping was that our person would be in the.
Rehab.
The rehab would, they would be there. For instance.
They need a siding. They might need a new roof. They maybe need grab bars in the, you know, some safety things in the, in the house.
Now that I'm doing the forever well at the Y, there are, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of my peers that would really like to stay in their houses, but they don't know how to finance a wheelchair accessible or the grab bars or, or some of that. And, and you all have heard it and you all have lived it with either yourselves or your parents. The limited income is not what they were making when they were, were working. And so my, my preference is that we stay with the, the 80%, but if we don't have anybody who's interested, up to. But not, not go out searching 115, let's search for that. Let's, let's see what we can, you know, make available. And this is, this is a, this is a super opportunity for us to help the folks that built this community.
But they also have to qualify too.
Yeah, they have to qualify. And there should be a limit.
Yeah, 115% AMI is the limit.
You don't get all 300.
Right. Oh, yes. Well, those are things.
Consensus on 80 versus 115?
Either way.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is folks are okay going up to 115. You wouldn't give a single person 300,000. You, we'd want to establish some parameters that we're giving grants, loans, whatever they end up being. And we will explore our opportunities with the CDA and their programs that they have. But essentially that you'd want to try to maximize the amount of grants and loans each year so that we're, we're putting it back in lots of hearts in the heart of the city.
And owner occupied.
Nicely done.
Owner occupied seems to be the consensus.
Owner, yes, I do have rehab owner occupied. All right, I have enough direction on that. That's gonna go to the council. I don't think it'll be at their next workshop because I think the packet might already be finalized. But really soon we'll be bringing it to the council. Before then, we'll start conversations with the county and we'll see what, what kind of programs we can figure out. They already have some that exist. Whether or not we have to develop new ones, I'll bring that back to you, so.
Any, any final comments for Abby on this subject? Otherwise, we're gonna move to the Met Council image. All right, we'll move on to item 7B, the Metropolitan Council Image 2050 Public Comment.
Imagine. Imagine 2050 Public Comment Period. So imagine 2050 is the Met Council's planning process that identifies a vision and goals and it sets policy foundation for land use, housing, transportation, water resources, and regional parks. They do this through the lens of these cross-policy areas of climate, equity, natural systems, health, safety, and wellbeing. All of this means the Met Council is kicking off its every 10-year planning process. And this really is the start of a number of years now that you will hear us coming back and saying, hey, we're doing some comprehensive planning. What the Met Council is doing right now is setting the rules and guidebook for our update to our comprehensive plan. I know it seems like it's kind of crazy because it's 2024 and that's gonna be the 2030 plan, but we have to have that plan adopted in 2029, in the next year or so. They'll come out with system statements. We'll just start this process, right? But all this starts with the Met Council's draft plans that they've set out. And I'm bringing them to the commission because there are areas in which I believe that the city needs to provide comment on. I've taken the time to review the draft housing, the draft land use plans for you. I think I included a hyperlink in case you guys needed to fall asleep before, before you were prepping for this meeting. But there's a few areas I identified in the packet that I wanted to bring up to you. So in the land use policy, the section on community designations, the Met Council is proposing to remove the emerging suburban community designation. For those of you that may not be aware, that is our community designation. What they'd look to do is reclassify the city of Forest Lake to a suburban community. And that would be increasing our minimum net residential density from three units per acre to four units per acre. We knew this sort of thing was gonna happen. We're a growing metropolitan community. And as much as we didn't like it, we knew that we were gonna continue to be asked to increase our density. So for a few of the members that are newer on the commission, the Metropolitan Council says, hey, suburban community, you, all that new land area that's building, everything south of Headwaters, on average, all that new land area that's being built, you have to develop it citywide, four units per acre. It's tricky. I'm not gonna lie. It's tricky.
Net.
Net. We'll get into net in a second, but yes, net acreage. So, one, hey, Met Council, we're not thrilled you're taking away our emerging suburban community designation. I would like to offer those comments to the Met Council. I want to see if the Planning Commission is in support of that. We're obviously bringing these to the council as well. I don't know if you want to discuss these one by one, but I'm kind of here tonight to just see if the commission is in agreement with where I'm heading with some of these comments to the council, Met Council. So how do you guys feel about going from emergency, emerging suburban to suburban, three units per acre to four units per acre?
Kevin, you can start because I'm gonna take a breath before I comment.
We are recording.
I think, I'm not sure if the designations, I'm not sure if the designation's going to make that much of a difference. Only because almost every new development that we look at as a PUD, they're looking at four to five units per acre anyways. Some of our zoning, we've already allowed that or more. So to me, I don't think it's the end of the world.
Thank you. Now I've had my second. So we cut our lot sizes in half last year in the residential area that'll be developed.
The MXR1.
Down to 7,500, which gives us, in theory, six units per acre. And we can't hit three units per acre with 7,500 square foot lots. To go up to four with all the wet we got, we'd have to build townhouses only. So whatever you have to do to get them off your back to keep it down at three, I'm in favor of. I, I should be more diplomatic, but.
Susan's going to be.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. Because they are requiring us to have a density and the kind of housing that requires city services that we are paying the Met Council for on a regular basis through the transit tax, but we do not have, all right? We, we also do not have the kinds of opportunities and areas to put in the, the grocery stores and the ancillary facilities requiring, that are requiring that kind of density. If we have that kind of density, we're gonna need significantly more park space, which, oh, by the way, is not x-ed out in their net density calculation. We do not have the, 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 the city services, the police, the fire. Glory knows there's no way that you're going to be providing water and sewer out to someplace like where I live in my grand, potential great-granddaughter's lifetime. There is just so much of our community that cannot be water and sewered. And it, it's not a good thing to have a well on every one-eighth acre lot. So I think that not only is our community character one of a rural community, we also have really valuable food-producing land. And the Met Council recognizes the environmental and health benefits of locally-produced food. We do not have the infrastructure and will not have it in the very long future to support the kind of density and transportation, water, and sewer that such, that that would require. This is nuts.
So what I'm hearing you say is you're not in support of the residential density increase from three to four units per acre? And you would like us to prepare comments in relationship to that?
And I agree with that too. It's, I just don't think the Met Council's gonna change their mind.
So that being said, I, I hear, so this is a concern, right? And I, I agree with every statement that's been said so far. I, I say it sometimes in a much more diplomatic way, especially when sitting with our sector representative like Ken and I were today. One of the land use policies that I wanted to bring up that I do want to comment on because this is very much in relationship to how it is we're supposed to meet these regulations. So net density allowances allows us to take out wetlands, water bodies. It does allow for public parks and trails to take that out. Public open space, arterial roads right away, and other developable acres that are protected by local ordinances, so like steep slopes. It doesn't allow us to take out storm ponds. Well, we all know that we have increasing stormwater regulations and heavy clay soils. So when you have heavy clay soils and you need to infiltrate water, your pond has to get bigger. We can't take that out. And that's a problem. And that's one of the reasons, Chair Gerard, that we're having trouble meeting those, even three. Because we can't take out stormwater ponds. We can't take out water body buffers and setbacks. We can't take out local roadways. And these are areas that are not, that can't be developed. I can't put a home on it. We can't build more homes. You just looked at Shadow Creek Estates tonight. That's a seven-acre gross developable piece of property. We, we took out some things for the trail and whatnot, some wetlands. But we have 46 units on there and we barely met the minimum density requirement for that land use district. So this is another area I want to provide comment to the Met Council and will be providing, if the council's in support, providing comment to the Met Council that essentially says, we need greater flexibilities. We need to be netting out some of these things that are local constraints in the development program to show we're actually probably meeting those density requirements. We're just not meeting it to the standards that they're asking, if that makes sense.
And Abby, there are times when being, being ultra-diplomatic is read by the Met Council as being.
Weak.
No, as, as being acquisitive to their needs. And perhaps stronger language without being rude.
Yep.
Is absolutely appropriate in this instance, please.
Yeah, I will let you know. Ken and I did meet with our sector representative a little, about a year ago. Former Administrator Patrick Casey and I met with our Gail Cedarburg. She is our representative on the district board or the district council. They are aware of these issues that we're having and the frustration that the city is having in meeting requirements that are mandated by a body that isn't elected. That's hard. And yes, there are some regional goals and policies and we can support those things, but we also need a little bit of give here, so.
And quite frankly, we don't need to meet our housing requirements until freaking 2040 and there is no penalty if we don't.
Commissioners, to my right here, you've been very quiet in this discussion.
I'm ready to go. I'll tell you, I agree with you. I, I think our community, it has a lot of wetlands. It's hard to be resourceful to meet their needs with all the wetland we have. Again, with all of our stormwater runoff and different things to create that. Plus, again, echoing what Susan said, to be able to run water, sewer out to these areas where they're wanting to do developments, plus police protection, fire protection and all that other stuff out there is, I think they need to take that into strong consideration.
When you start looking at these other suburban areas as you go out around the city, I mean, they gotta have the same issues we have, don't they? And how do they, how are they dealing with it?
Yeah, so I, there are two areas that the Met Council has, has really started to open up this, through this planning process that I actually will say I'm, I'm happy about. Met Council staff is starting to recognize that there are sub-regional challenges in meeting their requirements. So this year, when they did their population forecasting, any community that was impacted or ancillary on the edge of what was impacted by the White Bear Lake lawsuit, so we were actually included because we were on the edge of it. Our growth did not grow at the same rate as other metro subregions because it cannot, because of what's gone on with the, with the, that lawsuit and the water issues that are happening in this region. So the Met Council's starting to look at these areas. They've talked with Lino Lakes. They've heard from Lino Lakes, the exact same comments. I know that Hugo has also had conversation. I've had conversations with Hugo. I don't know to what extent they've had conversations with the Met Council. But that being said, they have been in working groups. They're hearing regionally that you, we have to be looking at these neighborhoods, so to say, these areas, northeast kind of metro area is all facing the same challenges. And so I am thankful that they're identifying that. And so one of the things that they have identified, and one of my subsequent slides will bring it up, is some sub-regional, what did I, how did I put it? Sub, performance for sub-regional flexibilities. So I'll come back to that, that why I'm concerned about that though. I'm happy they're doing, they're starting to see that you can't treat northern Washington County, northern Anoka County, the same as you're treating southern Dakota County. We're not the same. It's different topography. It's different land, you know, all of those things. What that means, I'm not exactly sure. But that's where I'm, I want to really put into these comments, these density calculation standards and what we net out really needs to be, I need to be able to tell them, I can't meet this requirement. I'll give them five of our last subdivisions and show them why it is I can't meet it. And it's not because we're not making lots small and it's not because we're making big roads. It's because we've got wetlands that we gotta work around, which, yes, you get to net those out, but if the wetland goes like this, this part isn't really that developable, right? So I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding that you support at least some comments around, hey, we need more flexibility in what we're netting out.
And quite frankly, Forest Lake is, is not the community that one thinks of as apartment haven, okay? We have more than our share of large apartment buildings. We have, we have, we have built all the apartment buildings that the North Metro needs. And we just happen to have them right here. And, and we've done it for the sake of density. But we do not have the infrastructure in our city to properly support those apartments, all right? We don't have the police and fire resources to properly do that. We have no inspection requirements. We have no regulations to protect the folks that are in those apartment buildings. And so we are apartment buildinged out. And quite frankly, that's the only way, when you do the math, that we could possibly meet their average density for the community.
I'm gonna skip over. I'm gonna skip over the one here. There's one other, a couple other land use policies that are of concern. One is this, and these are areas that I'm concerned because there's vagueness in their plan. One is the practicality analysis of development and demand. Their draft plan says local governments need to plan land uses that are realistically marketable within the planning period, focusing on plausibility and long-term viability.
Did I miss something? That this is for 2050, and we're supposed to be able to predict that?
Yeah.
Or, of all.
So, and I can see that in our, I can see how a statement like this has been generated when I even look at our plan and how we met our density requirements in our plan.
Yep.
But I wanna raise this as red flags of, what does that look like to local governments? And how are, how, what standard are we really going to be held to? And we might not know that for a while, but putting them on notice of this concern now, I think is gonna be helpful for us to have those conversations in the future. The other one is this performance-based regional and subregional flexibilities. They are gonna establish criteria in partnership with local governments as part of the work plan of where we can have flexibility. So one area that I've started to talk about flexibilities, and Susan touched on this some, we have a lot of apartment buildings, not just the big ones that have gone up. We have a lot of buildings, apartment buildings that were built in the sixties, seventies, and eighties, and they don't count towards our community density. I want to, I've already started the conversations with the Met Council. You're asking communities to meet the density requirements on all new density. All I've got is cornfields or wheat fields or whatever, whatever we're growing out there. Beans or, or whatever it is.
Ducks.
Ducks?
In our wetlands.
I, I need, I need to be able to count some of that existing density because it's, it's not adequately showing. We, we actually are a community that might be low on single-family, and we shouldn't be denied new single-family if we can't look at that old stuff. Does that make sense?
I, I find the phrase "in partnership with local governments"
In partnership.
laughable. Although, it tells me that perhaps they are going to begin partnerships with local governments. And in, in the comments, I would look forward to seeing more description of what that partnership looks like.
You're not skeptical, are you?
Me?
All right. And then the last one is our housing, the housing policy. So the metro couns, the, the Met Council has identify, identifies that there is a future affordable housing need metro-wide. And then they take that future affordable housing need and break it up by jurisdiction and say, Hugo, you have this much. Lino, you have this much. Forest Lake, you have this much. And you have to kind of break that out and show how it is you, we could achieve our future affordable housing by total acres of land. Trust me, guys, if you could see a lot of these tables. So they're changing some of the provisions this year that we need to look at different options for how we guide land. And I'm concerned that right now, if we used our existing math and our existing tables, we wouldn't meet their requirements. It's essentially going to require us to either increase the minimum densities in our medium residential, high residential, mixed-use residential districts of a minimum of ten units per acre. Or it's gonna end up requiring us to play around with some twelve units per acre and eight units per acre. I'm just letting you know this. This is one I'm not as familiar with, but our Met Council sector representative said, please take a look at this. You may want to provide comment. Yes, Susan?
Basically, what I'm seeing here is that they're saying, you're going to, we're going to tell you that you need Y number of dwelling units at thirty percent AMI.
Yes.
And you tell us thirty. You tell us where you're going to put those thirty dwelling units.
It's not quite that. So let's just say it's thirty units. And it's much more than that. But let's just say it's thirty units. We need to show where we're going to have at least three acres of land guided for a minimum of ten units per acre. We need to have at least three acres in the community guided at a minimum of ten units per acre to meet that thirty.
So basically, you want a five acres with a hundred and fifty, I believe, unit apartment building on that five acres?
It's not saying that that is where it's gonna go. It's saying, if you have to have five hundred units in the medium-density requirement, you have to have fifty acres guided to your community to show you could accommodate those five hundred units. It's a math equation that I'm not prepared to describe without a whiteboard and maths.
Unless all of our land was built on and sold out, we wouldn't have to worry about it, right?
We would have to worry about it at the time of redevelopment, but.
Redevelopment.
So, so like right now, and why this is of a concern is our medium-density residential district actually doesn't have a minimum density of ten units per acre. It's six units per acre. So we have to adjust that or look at guiding other lands elsewhere. Let's just say the magic number is five hundred. Our existing comp plan right now, I can tell, isn't guiding enough sufficient acreage. So I wanted to put you on notice that that was another area that I will be providing comment on. Yes, Susan?
Okay. Thirty percent AMI, or fifty percent AMI, is twenty-five thousand dollars a year. All right? That's what you're making, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. The guideline is you never spend more than thirty percent of your income on your housing, your rent. Okay? So where, we are going to find a developer who is willing to have apartments at eighty-three hundred dollars, because I just played with the math here, eighty-three hundred dollars a year divided out by twelve, that's less than a thousand dollars a month. There is no way that we will ever have a developer anywhere in the metropolitan area unless the city is subsidizing, or the Met Council is subsidizing, those apartment rents.
You wanna go back to that local affordable housing aid conversation?
Yeah, well, there's only three hundred thousand dollars.
I know that. I know that.
And, and, okay, so just doing the math, I don't care how many units we try and cram into an area unless we have a Japanese, I mean, all of our six hundred square-foot apartments are renting at considerably more than a thousand a month.
You're looking at seven hundred dollars a month, just so you know.
Oh, wow. So it's even less than, yeah.
Math I can do.
Yeah, well, so, I'm, I'm sorry. This, I love aspirational goals. I love, I love stretch goals. But they have to be rea, some, reality someplace in this solar system. Much less in Forest Lake. All right? So this one just needs to be completely rethought.
What I see they are doing is cities, you have lot, you provide lots of acreage for lots of medium and high-density housing. And somehow magically, some of that will become affordable.
Yeah, it's saying, guide it, not necessarily it has to build that way. I, regardless, right now, if you looked at our existing comp plan, we wouldn't be able to meet these requirements, which means that we're gonna have to play with our comp, our, our future land use in this next go-round to try to put in more density in the community, more medium to high-density in the community. And, yeah, so.
I don't care how much we guide this. It will never, those, no, that's seven hundred? That's at fifty percent AMI. They're looking at thirty percent AMI here.
Susan, I don't think that the policy's in place, but I don't think that they're established with the belief that it will happen. I think what they're asking is to set the parameters and then create an environment that it could happen.
Okay. But what happens then is they are asking us to change the, to essentially, to, to meet this and guide this. Any development that we have in the future is going to have to have a significant amount of apartment buildings.
Or more dense development.
Well, you can only get so dense. And as Paul mentioned, and you mentioned, that Shadow Creek is pretty freaking dense for Forest Lake. And I would not argue with, I don't believe that anyone would say that that is what we believe the character of Forest Lake or the community that Forest Lake wants itself to be. I, I, this, this is, this is very, very difficult.
I understand. That's why I brought it for, comments are due by October seventh. If you are that passionate about it, I did include that hyperlink. Anybody can make comment. They have a series of public hearings. You can go in person. You can make comments online. What I'm doing right now with you is having this conversation to then go to the council with a prepared comment letter. If the council agrees to it and the mayor, the authorized mayor to sign it, I'll get you all a copy so you have a version of it. But these will be the touching points of areas that I have identified. And I believe, I hear that you agree, that these are areas of concern for Forest Lake. And bringing this up to them now, before any sort of adoption, giving it to both our sector representative and our council member representative are, are high on the priority list, so.
There are some of us that have trouble accessing our city of Forest Lake Gmail accounts.
Well, we don't offer Gmail accounts.
Well, those city of Forest Lake email accounts.
They can fix that for you.
Yep.
They fixed mine last week.
Yep.
All right. I will, I will try again, yet again.
We can. We have support services. Give Ken or I a call. We will make sure that we get you guys the services you need to, to have that communication open, so. On that note, that's all I have for discussion, but I do have some staff updates. But I don't want to jump ahead, Chair Gerard.
So, just my last closing comments. So Shadow Creek, which we've decided has no parking. We won't plow it as a city. And if they're sitting on top of each other, that the trucks may overhang the sidewalk. The density is almost nine per acre for that size lot. And that is not Forest Lake.
And they get to smell the new Earl D.
And I actually don't think it got in at nine. I think the net density on it, was it nine? Or it was just?
Point eight-six is what I got.
Just with your quick math, yeah, no.
I took the raw land and divided it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was just above, so.
There's one wetland in there that.
The minimum.
I'm on the generous side.
The minimum density in there was sixteen units per acre. And I wanna say it was just, it was just made seven. So we're, we're, that, those are some of those challenges that we're having. Had we been able to take out that roadway, had we been able to take out that storm pond, that storm pond's fairly sizable for that. You would've seen that number jump pretty significantly from that seven units per acre. Then if that jumps up, how does that balance out all our other numbers?
But you're, to Susan's point, like, you're only gonna be looking at multi-story buildings in order to get that kind of density with that kind of AMI. The math doesn't work.
To get ten to fifteen units an acre. Well, the projected AMI will go up, obviously, by twenty fifty, hopefully.
Yeah, it can double, and it's not enough for today.
I know.
All right, I'll be a good boy now. All right, are any other final comments on, what subject are we on? The Met Council reimagine, image?
Imagine.
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 Yeah.
It's their, it's their image, their reimagining.
Who has, you have two staff updates?
I do, but, yeah, I do. They're all on me. I haven't seen you guys for a while, so we have some policy things just to run through really quick. These are true updates. But my question for you is, did you want, I know you know where to go around the room with updates. Do you want to see if our esteemed council member has updates before me?
No, he can wait.
Okay, all right.
Well, we're still on the agenda.
We are. So staff updates, just a, a couple here that are listed. Cannabis-based businesses, as many of you probably know, the state of Minnesota passed recreational cannabis use last year. Don, you're looking at me like you don't know what you're talking about. But, and it doesn't allow us to prohibit cannabis sales within the community. We do have to license at least two because it's based on population. City council has started to have conversations about the licensing aspect of cannabis-based businesses. But the next step in that process is really to start talking about zoning and use and where we would like to see these kinds of businesses. Not just retail businesses, that brick and mortar where you can, I don't know if that's a word, a pawn shop. But also grow facilities. You know, where, where do we wanna see them? How do we wanna see, what kind of performance standards? So you, I believe this, through this fall and early winter, we'll be bringing that back before you. We're working hand-in-hand with our legal counsel, though, on that one. Our goal, my goal would be to kind of, what are that high-level policy? Where would we like to see these? And then see if we can't go rob some performance standards from other communities so it doesn't take us through inventing the wheel. But just know that's coming forward. And then also code enforcement update. As many of you know, the city council passed administrative citation program earlier this year. As of August, we had had a hundred and twelve zoning code enforcement cases this year. We have a little over half of them closed. This is your team working on code enforcement, and we lose Jordan next Friday. So we know that there's still a number of code enforcement cases out there. It's, you know, we're, we're aiming for compliance. We don't wanna have to cite property owners. But we have issued some citations, nine of them to date. I'll also let you all know that part of this has been a little tricky for us in that code enforcement was a part of the building inspections division for a long while. And we did find a backlog of four hundred cases that went back to the start of twenty-two. So we have really been trying to cross-reference all the systems of where we've been managing code enforcement and how we've been managing code enforcement. But letting you know that it, we're working through our code, working with our new code enforcement program. We're fine-tuning it and refining it each time. We're kind of running into roadblocks, but we are getting our systems up and running and have, I think, done fairly well this year for it being kind of our first year with a more robust program. We'll say goodbye to Jordan next Friday. I was also just gonna give you an update on the city administrator search, but I don't know if council member Husnick has anything to share at all.
I can just kind of fill you in. We had a meeting next door, right?
Councilperson Husnick, if you would please come up to the lectern. You know, the, the audience that's online is just waiting for this.
Are they really? As you all know, we had a meeting right next door because we had to kind of compress everything here. You guys are using the, the officer tonight. But basically, what it boiled down to is that we've kind of boiled it down to like four finalists out of about six or so. And we're hoping to have a, the interviews are not done by the, we're gonna try to get it done on the thirtieth of September. That may change a little bit depending on schedules and that kind of thing. So the process now is to notify the finalists that, that they are finalists and that now they can do back. and that, um, now they can do background checks and that sort of thing. And then after that, that all becomes public. Uh, up until this point, it's all, uh, you know, we work with numbers and that's about it. But, uh, this is our second go-around with, uh, looking for an administrator, as you well know. And, uh, so this has been going on for months. I can't wait to get it done. And, uh, so we can get on with some other business here for the City of Forest Lake. And, uh, it's, uh, you know, until you meet these people and do the interviews and all that, uh, but it'll be another, uh, full day, uh, with, uh, apartment heads and, and, uh, council and whoever's interested. So that's our most immediate thing going on right now, so.
You're also kind of working on a budget, right?
We're working on a budget. We are working on a budget. We're trying to settle on, on what's gonna happen there. We do have to have that, uh, done, I think, on the 22nd. We have to at least submit it, um, the budget by the 22nd of September. I believe that's the right date.
Yeah, your, your next regular council meeting, you'll vote on the preliminary levy.
And that's the time we, we set a budget and hopefully we can moderate a little bit. By the time it gets to, uh, December, we can, as you well know, we can lower it, but you can't change it upward at that point, so. Um, yeah, so those are the two, those are the two big things we go.
Next year, has to live with that budget.
I'm sorry?
And whoever is elected next year has to live with that budget.
That's right. That's correct. So anyways, that's kind of a quick summary of what happened tonight. And, uh, so, um, of course, you guys would be the first to know. The other thing, too, uh, thanks for all you guys do. You gotta make some tough decisions here. And, uh, I did it for 12 years. And, and, uh, working with Paul and Susan and, and you folks, so it's been a long time ago. So anyways, any other questions that I can help you with? Or muddy the water?
Chair Jordan, if I might just piggyback on, uh, council member Husnick's, um, budget mention, there is at this point a budget in, uh, in the budget for another person in the planning department. Um, guess they've seen how this hooligan bunch of planning commissioners and think that you need more order? It's not the case. Um, but our staffing in the, uh, community development department is at 2014 levels, and we continue to just be asked to include more services, including in 2025, if this position is funded, some airport assistance. And so, um, just know that you might be seeing other faces if that budget is passed with that staffing in 2025.
All right, good. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have, uh, councilperson Roberts online, our liaison?
No, sir.
Okay. Back to you, Abby. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Jordan, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Well, wishes.
Oh, and where are you heading back to?
Uh, Fridley.
I, I think she meant career-wise.
Oh.
Or school.
School? No, just, I need more work.
She's already a graduate.
Okay.
This was her first taste in local government.
Good luck in your career.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sir, anything for us?
I think we've had plenty this evening. Thank you for your, uh, truly thank you, though, on your diligence for going through that variance request. It's, sometimes they want what they want and it just doesn't quite fit, but you gave it a good discussion and I can live with it compromise if you wanna call it that.
Kevin?
A couple thoughts that I think can better our community, and I don't know if this is a council issue or if planning should bring it to council, rental licenses. Uh, we have a lot of challenges with rentals in our community, and I think a simple rental license with a minimal fee at least gives the city some authority that we don't currently have. And the second thing that came up, and I thought about as we were looking at that variance request, is when you look at the impervious surface and all those issues, and this particular house had a gravel driveway. Once they do their thing and we give them their permit, and six months down the road, if they decide to put an asphalt driver in or concrete driver in, we don't require any permits. I think we really need to look at having driveway permit, driveways permitted it versus just somebody just putting one in, and what do you do then? Now it becomes an enforcement issue, right? And then you gotta try to get someone to tear it out. So I think we should look at having permits required for driveways.
We do.
I see people putting driveways in all over without permits.
They're supposed to get a permit.
Okay. I didn't realize that, but.
I didn't, I'm with Kevin. It was my understanding, uh, you only needed air for a new driveway, not to replace your driveway.
The policy has been, since I've been here, if you're changing, widening, even replacing, especially when you're working in the right-of-way next to the street, we want a permit because we want to check setbacks. We wanna verify impervious. No, in the rural areas.
I don't think it's on the website, though. Is it that way? I mean, where, where someone's gonna drive, put a driver in and they have to get a permit?
We'll take a look at it. Um, we definitely can do better at, at proactive education about our permitting. I'm sure there's a lot of activity that happens in the community after 4:30 PM.
No, and I get it. I know we have limitations, but that just made me think about it again because usually what happens.
Yeah.
Susan?
Nothing.
Dan?
No.
Jesse?
Nothing.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
And I have nothing. Based on that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Everybody wants to stay.
No, right? So not even 10 yet.
Yeah.
The chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and I have a second, it's a non-defatable motion. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for participating in the lively discussion this evening.